Hello.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Stay on the way. What? I don't know, I don't know where we're going. I'm not coming out.
Okay.
How are you?
Go ahead, it's horrible. Hi, مسأل خير لجميعنا. أنا دليل يسف من المحابة Center. أنا هنا في برادسورد آونو في الاقتماء بتاع المدارس بتاع ناشفل. ال board هي اقتماها النهاردة وده كل يوم تلات... No, it's not كل تلات. It's the second Tuesday. في مرة في الشهر يوم تلات هم هنا باقتموا وبيسماو للناس في ناشفل. عايزين يشوفوا إيه وعايزين إيه في المزانيه بتاع المدارس. فده طبعا اقتماء مهم جدا. وشفتو في أول الليف كان فيه ناس كتيره من جنسيات كتيره هنا علشان يسماو للجميع وعلشان يكلمو مع ال board members. دولت مجلس إدارة المدارس. احنا بن... we vote for them. بنتخ... بنتخ... بنعمل انتخابات علشان نختار من مجلس دي. فلازم نعرف مين في المجلس أول حاجة. وتاني حاجة لازم نيجي للاقتماء ده. مرة في الشهر هم بيفتحوا الاقتماء علشان الجميع يجو ويعني يكلمو. علشان جوة في ناس كتيره وفي كلام كتير وفي دوشة كتيره. أنا جيت برا علشان بس أقول أنا فين وبعملي. بس أنا كنت عايزكم تشوفوا ازاي الاقتماء ده. يعني how they run this meeting علشان مهم جدا. أنا عايز أشوف مصريين هنا أنا عايز أشوف العرب هنا علشان احنا صوت يعني المفروض كبير هنا في ناشفل. بس طبعا أنا رحت جوة ومشوفتش حد بس يعني في زحمه جدا وفي دوشة قامدها جدا. بس أنا هكون ليف مدت ممكن نص ساعة أو ساعة علشان أنا وريكم الناس في الجليات الأخرى هنا في ناشفل بيعملوا إيه في الاقتماء ده. الاقتماء بدأ I think على الساعة خمسة. وطبعا الاقتماء ده في ناشفل لو عارفين فين محل بابا عمي يسف في ميلود. هو عشر دقائق من ميلود. يعني قريبة جدا لل يعني شوية الناس هنا. وهمي جدا أن نيجي ونسمع يعني الجريان بيقولوا إيه واحنا بنقول إيه. فانا هروح تاني مرة جوة وإن شاء الله ممكن أترجم شوية بس yes for what school district? لناشفل كلها. مترو ناشفل public schools. So لكل المدارس من elementary, middle, high school من أنيوك لبلو view to Smith Springs to نولنز فيلم. مش نولنز فيلم high school علشان نولنز فيلم high school for Williamson County. بس في مدارس كتيره وطبعا ده مهم جدا للمصريين والعرب هنا علشان ده الفلوس بتاعتنا. ده الدرايب بتاعتنا. ولازم نقول ازاي الدرايب دولت هتروه لولادنا. لو عايزين مدرسين أكثر في ال اي سل الإنجليزي لغة تانية لازم نقول كده. يعني أنا شفت في طلاب كتيره في أنيوك high school لسه جايين من مصر ومن فيش مدرسين لهم بيعرفوا العربي. فده مهم ده لي لازم نعرف المزانيه بتشتغل ازاي. ودلوقتي هم بيقتموا علشان يأسسوا المزانيه. لو ما فيش حد من الجليه هتكلم ما فيش يعني هم مش عارفين الجليه عايزا إيه. فانا هروح تاني إن شاء الله ما فيش دوشة كتيره. Let me turn the camera. ولو في أسلا أنا ممكن أكتب إن شاء الله. Yeah, هم ابتدؤوا.
Most of all, congratulations to the players, the team, East Nashville High School.
So دولت مجلس. So كل افراد مجلس عندهم district. District six. فده أنيوك. أنيوك. وأنيوك. So لو عايزين في أنيوك. دولت الناس. لازم تعرفوا فريدا players. Fran Bush. Yes, Williamson County has their own meetings. So I would encourage anybody in Wilson and Williamson to find out where their meetings are. Metro Nashville has one meeting because they are one big school system compared to Williamson and Wilson. So ده اقتماء. هم كسبوا بجيسا. شوفوا ناس ادئي. طبعا أنا عايز.
Congratulations to the players who have school tomorrow, likely exam. Congratulations, East Nashville. Alright, now we also have a recognition of TWS region five principal of the year, Dr. Mount. Yes ma'am. Next up is Cambridge High School's executive principal, Ms. Michelle Sanchez. TWS double A honored principal Sanchez at their annual meeting last month. Named her principal of the year for Atlantic City District College. She has led Cambridge since 2010 and serves as a member of the TWS double A Board of Control. Principal Sanchez, we appreciate your service with TWS double A and we're proud that they recognize your good work at Cambridge High School. Congratulations on this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it possible? I just wanna make it past here. Thank you. Could I just stand here? Thank you. I'm staying right. I just wanted a good view. And have in front of everybody. Yeah.
Congratulations to the students.
Oh nice.
Another recognition from Mr. Football Class Four A.
So دلوقتي في جوائز ل... مدرسين وللطلاب.
Now let me tell you a little bit about this Pearl Palm High School senior had a tremendous season with fifty-nine carries for eight hundred seventeen yards and ten touchdowns along with twenty-two catches for three hundred and three yards and three more touchdowns.
من شمانت ناشفل.
He played defense for the Firebirds too and made twenty-four tackles. Faradat is the third Metro Nashville public school football player in history of award to win Mr. Football. Most importantly, Faradat has admitted to continuous education and play football at the University of Kentucky. And now we're going to keep reading and hearing his name for years to come. Congratulations to him.
هم وقفوا علشان الودا حصل على جيسا في الفاسكبار. وده القابة بتاع المدرسين هنا في ناشفل. هم هنا علشان يكلمو مع مجلس علشان يرفعوا احترام المدرسين هنا في مترو. وعايزين I guess دفع أكثر وbenefits after it. So شيفين النسليات هنا كل دولت بتاع مجلس هنا.
Alright, and now we're going to turn it over to the Glen Cliff High School and masters. For a presentation about all the great work they're doing this year. And masters and our wonderful academy coach now come on up and share with us.
So الطالب دولت من غنوب ناشفل. So قريبا من أنيوك.
I am Polly Kelly, the academy coach at Glen Cliff High School.
من Glen Cliff. So طالب دولت يكلمو ده من مجلس. مشافه لو هادرة تكمل عرفين تسماو. اللي بيكنلوها. In مدارس at Glen Cliff. بيكلمو عن ازاي بيحبوا المدارس بتاعته. علشان هي عندها يعني ثقافات كتيره جوة المدارس فمش بيحسوا بال... يعني التواحد أو إنههم بنفسهم. جريت نشوف طالب مصريين بيكلمو كده والده من مجلس. عندهم المهمات بتاع الاقتماء هنا. فبعد الكلام ده مجلس هيكالمو. طالب دولت بيكنلوها تدري بتمهم في المدارس السنهية Glen Cliff High School. فيتاس إيف كتير. ويه ابلو ما in مجلس فهذا... Oh هي اختو سورة. So دولت الطالب من غنوب ناشفل من مدارس السنهية Glen Cliff. ودلوقتي ال directors of. هم بيقولوا ان المدارس ديت احسن مدارس سنهية. بس بيحضروا كده مع الناس.
Alright, so congratulations to those students, those families, and all of the staff that support those students every day. And with that, we'll kick it over to Dr. Battle for the American report.
فده دكتور بادل. دكتور بادل هنا في البامبي والاسود هي مهمة جدا. بتكلم مع غمده علشان يعديه أو يكلمو عن المزانيه فمهمة جدا. هي مديرت مجلس ده. اسمها دكتور بادل. عندها دكتورة في التعليم. فكل القرارات اللي حصلت أمام يعني سنة اللي فاتت لو طلاب هييقون مدارس أو مش هييقون مدارس. كل القرارات دولت كانت بتيعي من دكتور بادل. فعندها جوة يعني كبيرة في مترو ناشفل علشان تأسس إيه بتحصل إيه بيحصل في المدينة كلها في ناشفل. دلوقتي بيكلموها ان ماسك وكمامات في المدارس. لو ده هيكون لسه هاكن مدارس ده زين يتروها أو لا. فبتكلم دلوقتي عن الحاكم بلي كان ضدها وكان عايز طلاب يختاروا لو عايزين ماسك ولا لا. ده هي كانت بتقول CDC without she كانوا بيقولوا لازم في ماسك أو كماما في الكمامات في المدارس. فهي بتقول هتسما للكتري اللي بيقولوا لازم في كماما جوة ايه لابنا. دلوقتي بتكلموها.
So with that, my recommendation to the board is that we review current conditions and context of the next board meeting to consider whether to a policy of masks being strongly encouraged but not required. As I mentioned before, the federal court decision has halted the new law.
فهاي بتقول أه أنت تامل. مش لازمها في المدارس. بتقول عن هتا من باحث. And ازاي في المدارس التانية في الولايات المحتهدات بتعملي في مودوان ماسك في المدارس. So. قادم مليون من دولار. في فلوستيا وزعم في كوميت تاناسي لناشفل. So شيفين في فلوس بتقول. So فلوستا علشان is سانا لقية. وهاتر من مدارس بتاع ناشفل قدم مليون دولار دولت. بتقول في مشكلة في شوية مدارس لما الاد فون هم في فifth grade عايزين يرهو من المدرسة. بيروا هم من elementary, the middle. فعايزين يسلحلو الأمر ل... للاطفال علشان يروا هم من elementary لميدو من غير صعوبات. So دلوقتي الست ديت هتكلم عن مشكلات in مدارس الابتدائية بتروح ل المدرسة. So ده الهدف بتاع كل المدارس بتاع ناشفل. بيقولوا ان الطالب اللي في الفاتي قريت في السنة الفاتي بيعملوا احسن لما يكونوا في المدرسة الابتدائية أكثر من المدرسة. فعايزين يهضوا السناتيات في كل المدارس ناشفل في المدارس الابتدائية. فبيكلمو دلوقتي عن الاتغيير ده. So شيفين هنا أنيوك وGlencle. شكر شكر. So could here men اطفال ما بيره غلنيكليف او غلنيو او يونا فسنة سنة واتاليايا عايزين يحطوا in طالاب من الميدل سكول في الميدل سكول That's in the fifth grade البرنامك دا اس موف تغيير تغيير So لو سماه توا انها فان دوكوما اطفال زغريانين اسماه تغيير تغيير فدلوقتي هيكلمو عن ال الام الامدارس الابتدائية فلسا بكلمو عن الفيتوت غري هيستنام مع المدارس الابتدائية في السنة السنة واتاليايا عايزين البرنامك دا جديد هنا في ناشفل بدل من يكونوا في الميدل سكول ما اطفال اللي اكبر منهم اتقي دولت الراكم الطلاب بنفسهم في المدارس دولت وشوفوا الام المدارس الابتدائية بتروح لالمدارس في الميدل سكول والراكم اللي على الbottom كدا The total number So دولت الگرائت بتا ناشفل هنا بيكبو عن الاقتمادا So لسا بكلمو عن الاتغيير في الفيتوت غري دو شيفين نمر My last slide just about that shows this transition. This year, we currently have seventeen schools shown in green in the P K K five grade structure. This includes elementary schools in Pearlcombe, Maplewood, and White Creek, along with Cambridge Elementary, Eagle Youth, and Cole in the Cambridge cluster. We are transitioning another thirty-four schools shown in yellow for start of the twenty twenty-two school year. There are five schools shown in orange that will transition in twenty-three, and this will complete the Glenwood and Hillwood cluster. The remaining fifteen schools in purple will transition in twenty twenty-four. And once all of the elementary schools have transitioned to a K five ديال دا كتر بادل مدير المجلس والدولت المجلس So كل المدارس هنا في كلستر يعني الكلستر يعني المجموع بتا المدارس الابتدائية في الميدل سكول والمدارس في سنة ويا ففي مدارس جديدة جايا لانيك شيفين نو ميدل سكول وجايا باردو لكيانج فالمجلس دا اورد فلوس علشان يبنو مدارس ميدل سكول تانية في انيك او كينج وحط فلوس لالمدارس هيلسبورن وهيلود علشان يحسنو المبنى افسو خدات كلان ازاي هيبنو كل المدارس الجديدة دولت او ازاي هيحسنو المدارس دا فعايزين يخلصوا بالtwenty twenty-five بعد تلات سنين فقرار كبير اوي فبكلمو عن كتير فهيبنو مدارس جديدة هيادافوا يديفوا الام للمبنى اللي الام للمبنى فهيعملوا حاجات كبيرة في التلات سنين اللي جاية فلسا بكلمو عن التيم لين ازاي هيعملوا كل دا وازاي هيقولوا لاهلي ايه مدارس اتالب هيروح فيها للفيتوت غري البرنامك اس موف تغيير تغيير So دلوقتي المجلس هيكلم نفسه هي بتقول كتير من الاهلي كانوا عايزين الاتغيير دا علشان يحطوا الفيتوت غري في المدارس الابتدائية كانت عايزا كدا الاد نفسها بتقول الاتغيير دا صعب فكل احترمها لدا كتر بادل هو هيرد عليها عن الام هي عنده عندها سؤال عن النمرت بتا الاطفال لو الاطفال في المدارس هتكونوا كتير لو اضافوا فيتوت غري لالمدارس الابتدائية فهو بيقول دا مش مشكلة
عندها سؤالين And then my second question is, I understand makes a lot of sense to me that Stratford would transition from being a five through twelve to being a six through twelve. So my next question is, M L K being a seven through twelve, what is the plan to adjust there?
بتسأل عن MLK دلوقتي لف هيكون في طالب اكتر فهما بيسالوا عن مشكلة الطلاب الكتير هتروح لامدارس السنة ويا لو المبنى ممكن تقدر بتكلم عن مشكلة الطلاب لسا في هم هبود نوكتا ديت بتكلمو عن مشكلة طالاب اللي بيستنوا في المدارس بعد الساعة ام يعني المفروض في حد معهم الحد دا مش مدرس الحد ام بس حد ام يعني سپورت ساف بس دلوقتي المدرسين بعد اليوم الطويل لازم يستنوا مع الطلاب فهي بتقول دا مشكلة علشان المدرسين ام تعبوا في اليوم وحرام يستنوا بعد اليوم دا يرى يعني يكونوا مع الاولى لما المدارس لازم تدفع لحد تاني اسمه سپورت ساف يستنام مع الاولى So الفلوس اللي جاية لالمدارس هنا في ناشفل يعني مليون منين مليون ام جاية للمدارس دولت فالست كانت عايزا مليون دولار دولت تروح علشان يدفع السپورت ساف يستنوا مع الاولى بعد المدارس مش المدرسين تمانية واربعين مليون دولار هتروح لامدارس سنة فهي ردت على دا كتر بادل وعلت بس في مشكلة علشان الفلوس التمانية واربعين مليون دولار لازم принципو ام يعني يعمل حاجات بالفلوس دا بس ممكن احسن لو دا كتر بادل علت لازم الفلوس ديت تروح للناس فمتروحش لاي حاجة لازم تروح للناس يسادوا المدرسين فعايزا الديستريكت المترو ناشفل يهيروا يجيبوا ناس علشان يشتغلوا اكتر في المدارس So في واحدة مش عايزا الفلوس تروح لكل المدارس علشان المدارس لواحدهم يختاروا ازاي يستعملوا الفلوس عايزا الفلوس ديت يقولوا الفلوس ديت راحا فين بالزبط ام مفيش اختيار وطبعا التانية دا كتر بادل عايزا كل المدارس يختاروا Yes, it is. دلوقتي بتسأل بتسأل الفلوس هتروح لكتب جديدة لاطفال ودا كتر بادل علت اه بتقول هي اتى هنا كدا علشان الاقتمادا كان من السبب بس دلوقتي الاقتماد عامة الناس هنا معهم فلسا بيسالوا عن التمانية واربعين مليون دولار هتروح فين وازاي هتروح المدارس دا So كل الاسئلة ديت عن التمانية واربعين مليون اللي جاية اس السنة الجديدة So في تمنتشر مليون هتروح لالتكنولوجيا الكل التف ازاي لابتوب وازاي يعني حاجات جديدة فهي كانت بتاكد عن الموضة دا ازاي الفلوس هتروح للاولى فطبعا دا كتر بادل علت اه هتروح الاولى بس مش بضغ ام فلسا في اسئلة من المجلس نفس لدا كتر بادل مدير المجلس فلسا ان شام بكلمشي ماتكلمش ازاي هي بتقول التمانية واربعين مليون دولار بتتروح لالمدارس علشان covid بتكلمو عن مشكلة الطلاب اللي حسوا انهم مي مي لمش حاجة او ايت الكرونا علشان كرو على الكمبيوتر وكان مفيش دروس في المدارس مع المدرسين فاسم المشكلة ديت لرنين لاس الموضة اقتمام عام للشعب في ناشفل في ناشفل الموضوع اجتمع عام للشعب بناشفل في ناشفل ام من مغلس المدرسة ناشفل مارا فشا بيا ملوكة ده للشعب يجي بتكلما هم دلوقتي بتكلموا عن التغيير في المدرسة
On those spirals, can those be changed year to year? Or do they have to continue to do the same year every year?
Yes, they can. They can be changed year to year. And there actually is a process for revising within a school year, just like with SBB or Kindle or other places.
I thought I remembered having a discussion on that. Would be able to If there is a change in their school makeup or something along those lines, would they change things to different qualities?
That's right. We're really trying to ground ourselves and return on the business. So we want to constantly be in our continuous improvement cycle to make sure the investments we're making are having the impact that we intended with those particular strategies.
so لسا بتكلموا عن الفلوس وهم يات ام التغيير ام فليسا في اسئلة من مغلس
That we'll be quite happy about the fifth grade being accelerated to next year.
هي بتقول في الناس وده قدام ان في الدنامي fifth grade accelerated
Yes, ma'am. There will be additional communication.
هي بتقول ازاي المدرسة تكلم مع الاهلي علشان يقولوا التالب مش هروح الامم ميدوس قدة هيستنوا في المدرسة الابتدائية هي بتقول ام هنبدأ من دلوقتي بن حصر الاهلي عن التغيير ده وللتغير ده حلو اه وهتكلموا من المدرس اه كل اسبوع علشان يعملوا التغيير ده من غير يعني surprise او هي حاجة للاهلي والمدرسين بيقولوا رخوا على website بتاهم علشان تشوفوا ام المعلومة بتا التغيير ده اسمه reimاجنت scores هي عالت مشكلة تانية ام للمدرس ام امتى المدرس هتبدأ كل يوم علشان ممكن يقعد بدر ياوي على الاهلي او مش بدر للاهلي هي بتقول ده مهمنا قدام ام بتكلما ام امتى المدرسة تبدأ كل يوم فده تاني حاجة هتكلموا عنها دمها يكاد يارو في المدرسة
Yes, I mean, I think if we think about this with the fifth grade transition process, we got a lot of feedback. We had town halls, we got surveys, I mean, enough information.
بتقول ام قبل ما يكرر وان يحط فيت كريت مع المدرسة الابتدائية كان كان بتكلموا الاهلي كتير علشان يحسو باراهم ويا بتكلموا علشان تشوفوا هم اراهم اي في الموضوع ده فهي بتقول يعني فكل حاجة بناسل ارا الاهلي so ده الreport بتا مديرت المدرسة كلها في ناشفل ام بتقول ام جديد ودلوقتي طقة هما هيفتحوا الكلام للشعب فشعب هتكلمت دلوقتي للكل الناس يعني كل الناس اللي سكلوا اسمهم هتكلموا وده الorder بتا كل الناس شوفوا النظام يعني اول حد بلي ويعني كل الناس عارفين هما هيكونوا امتى علشان كل الاسامي yeah كل الاسامي بالنظام اول حد بلي راحوا للاني حد هي مش هنا راحوا للتابت حد عالت اسماها وانها بتكلموا عن الگنز وال ون sorry هنا في المدرسة عندها مشكلة بال الشوز في المدرسة فبتكلموا عن هي بتقول ان هي مش شغل مش شغل المدرسين يقولوا ام مش شغل المدرسين يقولوا اي حاجة عن الگنز ام ومش عايزا ماسك في المدرسة يعني غريبة قدام بس okay بيقول مشكلة الاطوبيس هنا مش مشكلة المدرسة مشكلة الادارة اللي مش بيتفاو مش بيتفاو بالام سوا الاطوبيس فده مش مشكلة المدرسة مشكلة الادارة فلازم الادارة اه يصلحون المشكلة دية هو مدرس هو عايز يقول ان الكركلم بتا الرياديات هنا ام احسن الجديد الكركلم الجديد من الماس احسن يعني في رأي هو بييشغل قسم الماف او الريادة هنا في ناشفل علشان التغيير للكركلم الجديد هنا بيقول في مشكلة كبيره في المباني هنا ان Charter Schools بيخدو المباني العامه في الفلوس بتا هنا يعني بتا الفلوس بتا هنا ف هو ديت Charter Schools تستعمل في المباني الامم فده تالت ده فتالب هنا هتكلم اسماها وهي ايش بتكلموا عن ام الmental health هنا بتكلموا عن الساحة مع طلاب ولازم ام مدرسة تكون ام او اوتا حد حاجة اكتر علشان ام يسادوا الطلاب في الساحة بتقول ان المدرسة بتتفا يعني اكتر من مليون دولار تناية من مليون كل سنة علشان يجيبوا ام police في المدرسة بس مش بتتفا اي حاجة للطلاب ام علشان حاجة للساحة بتا هم هي ام البتلي راحت ابلاها هي ديت بتكلما مدرسة هي ديت الكماما في المدرسة فعندها صور هي بتقول من مغلس مش بيع بس الامم كماما بس بتقول بس بيقولوا للناس لازم يبزول كماما في المدرسة عندها صور بس طبعا عالت حاجة يعني ون sorry قدام عنده غراز علشان كل كل شخص عنده ترديه وكل الناس وده اخدوا وقت علشان يتكلموا ضد الكماما في المدرسة بتوو او هي بتقول وده وما فيش ام مش بيسمى للارا للاهلي ومش بتكلمو مع الاهلي
Another remedy is later high school start times. This board has said repeatedly that high schools would benefit from later start times like you spent hours last meeting arguing over charter school students miss elrod voted against them because it wasn't fair they got fifth in elementary and not the rest of her district no it's not fair but instead of denying what's best for certain students why not demand the best for all students another remedy is later high school start times this board has said repeatedly that high schools would benefit from later start times like magnet and charter stores yet you refuse to discuss it another remedy is optional masking we have pediatric vaccines that was always the goalpost to allow mask optional yet there's no discussion of it if you're worried that covered rates will increase i urge you to look at every county around us and most of the private schools in town like the one mayor cooper sends his kids to which have been masked optional for months they have no higher rates of covid than mmps optional masking allows speech delay english language learners sensory disorders emerging readers appearing in group kids to learn more easily it takes the burden off teachers more echo back because some kids get in trouble constantly with their masks while others don't another remedy is intensive tutoring you have a virtual only volunteer tutoring program it's not enough students first that's the remedy if students need for first fifth grade would be in elementary high school would start later mask would be optional there would be tutoring mmps has the very best
هي بتقول ان المغلس مش بتهدت الطلاب الاول بس بيهدوا نفسهم ففي تغييرات هي عايز تشوف تشوفوا في المدرس هنا زي الطلاب يجو في وقت متاخر على لاشان يناموا اكتر ويهدوا في الفifth grade ما في المدرسة
my name is harris segan I am the mom of two mmps students I live in district two I am one of many parents who are calling for the end or mask mandate
هي ديت الماس باردة ديت كمامات
they would realize it's high time for policy change the fact that mmps deliberately displays this data in the most useless way possible reveals that there is an agenda that favors politics not science for example last year we could download our weekly data as a pdf this year it's displayed in a non savable format they know this they're counting on us not keeping track so parents are taking strange shots last week only one tenth of one percent of our students tested positive that means ninety nine point nine percent did not have covid but we made them cover their faces for seven hours cloth or paper just in case eighty of our schools well over half posted zero cases last week another forty six of them were between one have remarkably low case rates harris hillman special education school has four hundred and fifty students many of whom be classified as medically vulnerable they had as few as have been zero for almost half of her semester we have five hundred and forty one kids across four dedicated pre-K schools they have had to cover their tiny faces for six hours a day yet their schools have all been mostly zero every single week with a total semester case count as low as fifteen cambridge early learning center has had zero cases all year long why are we masking our preschoolers a month ago I was missing a week of data so I inquired to student health services for the archive of the report when I eventually received didn't have access to those numbers and it would be a bit of a process to get me what I needed keep in mind the information I was asking for had just been on the website and this is the department responsible for reporting and analyzing analyzing the data that's supposed to inform our district wide public policies like masks this is unacceptable mmps is in credibility crisis where is the accountability while I disagree with the conclusions of the sixth circuit ruling about mandates this note from it stuck out school policies should be ready transmission data and adjusted to align with new information about the pandemic
بتقول ان المدرس مش بيولو كلام ساحن الكرنا وكيم افان اسوبو بالكرنا هو مش عايش هنا بس هو مدرس هنا بتكلم عن ال رياضة مس زي المبنى لازم يكون جهزا على لاشان الريادة هدفه افان بيقول ان الريادة مهمة على لاشان الطلاب يروح الكلية بالscholarships وال عنده ما هيجا عن المدرسة عن الريادة فهناك المدرس يهدو فلوس في الريادة على لاشان يزاعد الطلاب يروح الكلية كل الناس اودي تيكلمو
هو من knowledge academy and of any arc give the global moment
nicole bynum jairo matel lopez i'm so sorry to butcher your name
good evening uh chair members and members of the board my name is sarah montes and i'm a senior at knowledge academy and i can still remember the days that she walked the the stores i will say uh last year in boulder in the country i had not a trouble with english i had not a not one friend and i just felt totally eliminated
بتكلم عن تكردو في المدرسة
I have found something special I found something that I didn't think I would find and that year that first year those those teachers for the students those walls saw me being able to have a full conversation in english saw me finding people who cared for me who felt for me
في المدرسة كانت مهمة الاول ايام هو كان هنا في امريكا
become become more and more
على لاشان الازدقاء
and by the time I I left the school I went to others and I was and I was happy but in the middle of my high school career I fell I I didn't feel a calling and I was concerned I felt no home I felt no calling I was I was concerned what's happened was a good high school
بس لسه
so I went to the first home that I've ever had in and I there I realized my calling I I I got the skills I I got an education I got leadership skills I I I and I realized that what I wanted what I wanted to do and this this june sixth I will be shipping out and start my training as a youth army soldier it is it is my school it is this struggle that made me a tiger that made me a fighter and maybe someone that learns further from from every time we fall down that a person that learns from hard times and I and I will live my life and I will do my years of service but I want to come back to my school and I want to go back to those doors and I want to see another child and I want to look at myself and amen and say you're going places because I was able to I was able to because of my school I was able to accomplish what I've accomplished to this day thanks to this logo thanks to those teachers thanks to those walls and I'm forever grateful I'm forever grateful for to be a knowledge tiger thank you
thank you and thank you for your service henock tilahin
good evening chair members of the board my name is henock tilahin and I'm a freshman at knowledge academy
تالب تاني من knowledge academy فاني أوك
ka is a school with many opportunities I've been offered jobs volunteers and many more unlike many other schools that I have seen in the state administration dangerous care people like coach geremy doctor geremy coach ellison miss bing mr mba and mr boas this is me a joke on my head I've had staff members run away to give me opportunities that the school could not offer such as giving you a chance to go to private pre-school to take AP history geography as you would know that is uncommon in most schools my parents being immigrants coming here out of coming to this country one of the best for me if I could go back and choose to go to ka I would choose to do so I hope my parents made a good decision because I feel as if ka the best for me even though there are numerous quote unquote scandals this school still strongly remains during the pandemic ka was the second school to open during virus with the protocols that were followed no student was harmed from the virus that following year ka has treated me and many more students amazing it is a school that is friendly to all cultures sexualities identities and religions this is the school that needs to stay in its seat please consider us I hope you vote in favor for our rule thank you for your time
هم بيكلمو عن المدرسة دي على لاشان ممكنا في المدرس يلجو المدرسة دي في مشكلة فكل الطلاب دي بيكلمو عن knowledge academy وزي بيحبوا المدرسة دي
ka feels like home to me I love how I can vulnerable people and teachers staff they help me draw the person in and out of school teachers they always want students to get their top abilities and they want everybody to be reach your highest potential the people about campus like a big family uh we welcome everyone who wants to join we try to encourage people outside the knowledge academies and any our community to come support the school they they encourage people um always to be active and always be in their community a good example is our nissan thing and fundraisers they always got people coming in to support knowledge academies uh last week I love how they prepared me for college um we had multiple college tours councilors to come speak even the military recruited came to talk about military path before that I worked so careful I went to but college I was skeptical about it I thought it was too much and I didn't know what to do but now that I got that work and research and that program I know that what I want to do what I don't have to that's all I have thank you for your time and opportunity to keep couldn't vote in favor to acknowledge
good evening chairman of the board
good evening chair members of the board
لازم
i'm sal shatman curry curry is chairman and I'm also a
نما ويا اولو ازموكو هيجا برو دم
undervalued and sometimes it feels to be underappreciated to work with such dedicated professionals day in and day out is quite rewarding and this has been my experience since joining the knowledge academy team
هو بكن باردو عن knowledge academy وزي
good morning and occasionally fist bump these may seem like small gestures however they set the tone for the day ka has a diverse student population which represents our community some may say that we are an extended family it would be devastating if ka was not an educational option in any other fear of the unknown virtual settings and returning to the classroom seems like a possible task as a parent and educator I would be remiss to not take the time to thank the leadership at dei for making this transition less daunting despite the challenges I'm also proud to say that through it all we managed to achieve a one hundred percent graduation as we foster relationships with our young scholars providing educational outlets as well as extracurricular activities are essential in providing a billion bucks for success I currently serve as the founding advisor for our student government association and when I say that the campaign trail leading up to super tuesday which was our ka election day was full of energy and excitement that would be somewhat of an understatement this is the energy that makes school more than just a school additionally we have a student advisory council which meets monthly with our principal and our student advisory council along with the sda are not only the organizations that exist at ka we currently have in our current chartering the beta club golden kiana society anime robotics the reptile club fbl eight cheerleading basketball soccer super skills conditioning and weightlifting as coach geremy mentioned earlier student involvement and leadership will assist in preparing our young scholars for the future that will need them it goes without saying that I love our ka family and I'm personally committed to our success I wish to have many more years in doing so as my hopes that our charter is renewed thank you for your time and
brand martin
دلوقتي بيسما للارى العامة للشافه ناش عن المدرسة في ماودا
good evening board my name is jennifer black and she tells me to speak and I am the family engagement representative and mom's having I've been staffed for about a year and I've been involved in
carol shaheb
for about two years growing up I
yeah carol اسمها مسر على لاشان يكلمو
I realized I had missed out on a vital part of being an educator that's giving families the right to choose parents want to be a part of their child education knowledge gives that opportunity to be a part of every aspect of their children's education
هي بتكلم عن knowledge academy باردو وزي بتاع بالمدرسة فشوفوا ماودا واحد بس كابو كيم اشخاص من الطلاب من الاهلي على لاشان المدرسين على لاشان يكلمو عن ماودا الواحد على لاشان يقولوا لان المغلس يدوف فلوس لان المدرسة دي
our families a great opportunity to be a part of their scholarship education in a way that does not operate anywhere else and I would love for their right to choose knowledge academies to remain thank you for your time
good evening chair and members of the board my name is james locke and I am currently in my junior high school and I've been a student at knowledge academy since my fifth grade year it is my honor to stand before you to advocate for my school imagine going back in time to when we were leaving the safety of elementary school and beginning your journey to middle and high school although excitement may be predominant predominant of emotion a subconscious fear and concern is definitely present I had many qualms in regards to such a promoting environment all the horror stories and all the how to survive middle and high school videos did wonders on my perception of my educational future if I were to go back in time to twelve year old me I would tell him that although his qualms are warranted he is about to embark he is about to embark on the greatest adventure that surpasses all his expectations, meet new people who will push him to unbelievable heights, and truly embrace himself as the first LGBTQ+ member of his lineage. My first steps into Knowledge Academies have greeted me to the greatest family I could ever be a part of. Students and staff from the community, former communities that works together to nurture growth all across the student body. Everyone, both new and former, endeavor to raise one another at heights inconceivable to others. Even when faced with the threat of termination in the pandemic, Knowledge Academy has displayed tenacity and continued to fulfill its mission to prepare students to make the best academic and social choices, leading to a successful life connected to college community creativity and culture. I intend to uphold this vision, or I would not be the student standing before you had I not been formed by their mission. For the past seven years, I have grown alongside Knowledge Academy and seen how much it has surpassed all of us. This development and growth has proved to me that everyone is capable of improving. As of now, I see so much potential for us, potential to provide, to refine.
Oh, one was shown, this dinner. Seven or fifteen, I should call you.
I thank you for your magnanimity and hope you will vote in favor of our training.
All one hand, do.
Mahir Malik and then Carol Shahada.
Good evening Chair members of the board, my name is Carol Shahada and I'm a junior at Knowledge Academy. I have been serving the school since my freshman year. Now I'm currently the chief editor of our university. Over this past year, we have gained a significant, significant increase in support and sponsors. These sponsors have also opened more opportunities for students and to grow as a whole. As word spreads of our presence, of our presence, more, more staff joined our school. The enforcement of staff members allows more ideas and more programs to be added to our school, such as an sports team and. Students have all.
Carol, it was a bit kind of a man, it's a bit mad.
Provide more student rent projects, such as international affairs, but they expect to have more power to commit for the student life. Knowledge Academy has also tried to provide students with more college opportunities to better their chances of successful future. Thank you for your time and I hope you will vote in favor of our training.
Thank you. Isaac August, Augustine?
Good evening Chair and members of the board, my name is Isaac Auguste and I'm currently a junior in Mom's Academy. I've been, um, at the school since I was in sixth grade and I have never seen such a school put the time and effort into the students. I've never seen such a staff so caring and.
This is because of it, and in the dress.
Uh, I remember that I was, uh, uh, one year, I totally. Correct, but this school will help you learn that everybody can care about you. And that you aren't nobody, but you are somebody that you can be someone special that the world can accept you for who you are. I've been able to join the basketball team even though I didn't have confidence in making it to. I've been able to make many friends and, and be able to relate to them and be able to have great time. Even though of past years with COVID, I've been able to stay happy because of the school. I've been able to stay happy. They care about you and they don't leave you alone. They want you to be happy and they want you to achieve something greater than you can be for right now. They want you to be the person that everyone can look up to. And they want you to be that special someone that can represent the school and represent the generations to come. From your kids to your grandkids, maybe even your great-grandkids. That's how much I believe this school can prosper. That's how much I believe that this school can help many others, generations beyond. Thank you for listening and please support the school and our charter renewals.
Can become them, I'm a say behind mad dress. For any art, where, unless my goodness, you have a, and you still matter, and mad dress. If you told about ten year, I'm telling you, and that's in mad dress.
I never had been to a charter school, sorry, we know what's in the space. But once I got to know the school itself and the students and teachers, I noticed how the students and the teachers actually care about the students. How all the activities are creating opportunities for the students, the students feel their passion. This is the first school out of three high schools that has access to students on college trips and helping find out what I really want to do in my life. The school, the, the students at K A are a big community and that is something that we want to keep around. Thank you for your time. Think voting in favor to the people who are.
So, I'm sure. Model one. And this, um, commonness, I can remember, and my daughter.
Hi, there is the board, I'm just going to talk on the gas with Knowledge Academy. Uh, but a little more than a decade ago, uh,
For the same, can they move on, Knowledge Academy thing, y'all?
I was an academy partner then, uh, which would help to, in the very first launch of the academy system, on the first day we have the academy. I joined as an academy partner because I thought we could help create engaging original programs for students. About four years ago, I joined the team at Knowledge Academy for the same reason, I want to create engaging original content. Uh, when the E D I team came in, I wasn't sure what to think about them, I don't think.
For more than a few months, I've seen another year, which, that's why I did it. But I can get nice kitty, I can let them, and they might miss. The, I can move them up America, which I seen, you smell them, so to a head. I seen, I mean, get my, to tell them, for. So, I mean, the way to move them, I mean, I should, I should let them, I'm a model.
So I'm just wondering why we're even debating whether this school needs to have a new. Every student in the area is, you fill the capacity here, increasing our enrollment. And, and why don't we talk about not doing the charter of one of the highest performing schools in that question? That's just, that, that baffled me why we're even talking.
James Franklin, thanks sir.
So, this is a finess kitty.
Good evening. Um, I wanted to say, cats out the bag. Um, we had a panel tonight, come up here and say that we can't keep security staff. I didn't really give them a say. She said, we cannot keep security staff. Why? No one wants to work.
Be all in. But if you had, be a stand-up film, there's a, there's a, there's a. It's all the same.
Can people leave it?
For this, because of the show, film, there is.
You let a person transfer out of our department?
Who was security enough in mad dress.
He's still on the transportation. I mean, that's cool, you kick the body. But ask him why he's leaving. Ask him why he's leaving, ask him why he won't transfer out. Just as of today, we sure staff are ready, six.
You will, and the lesson, and my list, yeah, that will, for this, and the best, that's a little home, I miss you, I miss you. But I'm, I should tell you, film, mad dress, with your little home, him, that's, um, it will, where I'm in it, the world, film.
Something that can be fixed, you know, the district, to the E D program. Not giving that opportunity. He's on the top of the block now, to be gone, to be terminated. Used to be part of somebody's family, said something, at their school, high school. Yeah, he's on top of the block, to leave. Um, I even got pulled into the office under investigation. On what? On what? I got the evidence, I got the conversation, I got it on the, uh, if you're interested, I could provide it. What happened to that investigation? Nothing, nothing, nothing at all. It was a waste of my time. It was a waste of the people's time to try to pull me into the office and investigate. Our security department is in a world of hurt right now. As of January, when we come back to school, it's gonna be about eight people. Forty years, friends, gone, been killed, retired, gone, ask him why he's gone. I think you have, uh, Fred Kim for that, I think you have it, yes. Security department is in disarray.
Amy Johnson? Bethany Riddle Johnson?
Good evening Chair, members of the board, my name is Bethany Riddle Johnson and I live on Lord and Road in Genesee, Martha Sisters. I'm also an M N P S parent and a college professor. And first I want to thank you for your strong support of Universal Maps, Universal and State, based on a lot of caring mistakes. And for supporting all gender identities, so that all of our children are welcome and safe. But finally, I'm here with the Now as Education Task Force. We are here to recognize and advance Black brilliance, asserting the need for equitable access and support for advanced academics for all M N P S students.
He was the same game. When the other film, M N P S, film, mad dress, and a financial. What about, and the lesson, for us, after, the other, um, film, mad dress.
Is to identify and eliminate inequities in one of the M N P S four values.
So, the world, the world, the world, but I, and my, and when I, but I spend.
And high expectations, each year, in each subject and in each classroom. As an educator myself, I know the advantages of that, of the study, advanced academics, and I know how to navigate the school system to ensure that my children have access to them. But I've had to figure this out myself, and not all families know of the many benefits of this.
But all in the heart, that's why he was there, so I've heard from us, but I'm mad, so I've heard, I'm mad, so. We're more than today, for our, for our, but Venus, but I'm sorry, my, I'm sure, I'm. You give you, I'm, I'm mad, there's.
And actions parents or guardians can take to help their students meet criteria for enrollment. For their currents, currently students are asked, sorry, students' early post-secondary opportunities in M N P S high schools depends on their zip code. With large discrepancies at that school, as highlighted in the M N P S today. Thus, M N P S must earmark dollars to expand advanced academic opportunities in schools serving the most Black and Latino communities that are currently underserved. And so in closing, we must work together to address the inequities in advanced academics to get us to the M N P S four test to identify and eliminate inequities.
Lauren Stalworth? Council? Councilmember Jay Rosenberg?
Good evening Chair members, I think after a continued service during these challenging times, um, while.
So, it will be the men in magless, but in magless, but I, I come, I should, my dress, for Metro Nashville.
Sadly, I'm here to share some things going on at one of our middle schools. Imagine a middle school where a white student steals a soccer ball from a black student, says suck my D, you stupid blank blank N word, and the principal brings the black child into his office and tells the victim that since the offender wasn't looking him in the eye when he said it, there's way of knowing if he was the target. Or a middle school where lockdowns occur without any notification from teachers and parents. Lockdowns that lead students to fears of being in the middle of a school shooting, only to expose other students to the trauma and the drug dealing that are brought in and had, that take place in the hall. Or a middle school where non-essential sexual incidents go unpunished and are never even entered into the system. Or a middle school where this represents barely the tip of the iceberg of what we know, to say nothing stories from those who don't know how to reach their goals, that's felt in middle school. Families have been leaving, teachers have complained of incessant bullying by the administration, and many have left or are planning their exits at higher rates than the county. A Ps have been marginalized, parents and educators complain of being dismissed and gaslit. And the latest panorama data collected from teachers is shockingly negative about the administration of Bellby Middle. Two formal complaints were filed and dismissed, but there's been no opportunity to share the multitudes of other concerns brought by parents, former parents and educators, and it's deeply discouraging. Councilmembers Swara, Hurt, Hauser, Mendez, and I filed a resolution asking for an independent investigation into the B M S administration because these concerns are going unaddressed. And appears unlikely, and it appears likely that the executive director overseeing the school is protecting the administration. We deferred this resolution so we can lay out concerns with greater specificity, but have hesitated because these matters should not have to play out in the public square. The official channels are broken. Teachers and parents recognize this, and there's understandable fear about coming forward when M N P S has appeared to be sweeping it all under the rug. I invite any of you that have not had the opportunity to discuss this, to reach out to me or another council member, since sunshine laws limit your ability to discuss directly with Ms. Tyler, who's been fierce about trying to get the attention of the administrators to get the problem addressed. Bellby Middle School is in a downward spiral, and turning a blind eye, blind eye to this pattern of mismanagement and abuse is not an option. Children are being done wrong, families are leaving as a result, and we simply can't afford to lose more teachers. Don't be complacent, I won't. Please help.
Councilmember Anthony Lee?
Sophie had the ten, and I'm glad you're so happy.
Hello, how are you all doing today? Did you ever say you're okay?
Yeah, one more time. I'm so sorry.
Madam Chair, board members, and director of battle, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak today. First, I want to thank you for standing up for our children, our teachers, and against others, external political establishments that are aimed to divide the cooperation that we can have together. When I was asked to come here to speak, it's important to our, we give this.
So, I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus, my little sister. Um, I couldn't, but I was, who can film family information center, Marcus. My little sister. I couldn't, but I was, I will, I'm, um, I took a, uh, but I'm, I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus. Um, I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus. But I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus. But I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus. But I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus. But I'm a shitman, I can film family information center, Marcus.
And wanting to hear from twenty-three-one. If there are people, as you saw, uh, there are people who are against the comments in the madrasa. They were people who talked, coming back, because they talked about the matter. And there were students, and one was Muslim, who talked about, um, the address of the area and how the office is supporting the university. Um, and give them money because she is a charter school. So, there were a lot of people talking. Of course, if the students want to talk about the matter in the university, I mean, there was a person who talked about guns, who talked about security. He talked about the teachers who don't have money. Who talked about the job in the university is hard and there are no benefits. So, there is a lot of words in the university. Um, the communication with the police, there were people who talked about a lot of things, and all of them are in the system. Each one, um, one, two, three, um, in the world, and they say your name. You come to the office, you talk to the office for three minutes. So, it's very systematic. So, you can get the children, um, the children with, um, because they say they are in the university. And, I mean, for any matter, I mean, not necessarily a matter, um. I mean, any matter, wanting to talk, I mean, about the university. Um, we saw there are people from the office of the government here in Nashville coming because they talk to the office of the university. Um, I mean, Councilman Antonette Lee, with the termos Aniak, so he's. Um, talking about the university here in Aniak. There was a council member, there was a second, um, in the office of the government here in Nashville, but I. Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember his name, I don't know his name. People of the office go to the community because they talk. Um, so Muslims, they have the same voice, um, because they talk, and not just one person talking. All of us, all of us, in the world, all of us, let's go, um, because we talk. Of course, the match starts, um, in a report of the manager. So, I'm here, I'm at eight o'clock. It's seven, and it's my, I mean, they have a lot of time. Um, they go in the night, but, um, I mean, a lot of information, um, and the time passes quickly. So. It's very important, the next time they do this, I'll put it in the center, the center of the university, because I'll go and talk. Um, I'm, of course, not going to the university here in Nashville. Um, I don't have children here in the university in Nashville. But I, I'm going to talk about what I hear and what I see, um, because we have a special here and children go to the university in Nashville. Um, but the parents, when they go, my son, I mean, they go to Aniak High School and want to be in the, uh, want to be a teacher, I guess. I mean, the office will feel a lot more than I, I'm living, not in Nashville, and I feel blah, 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 blah. So, yeah, I hope, um, I did, I mean, I'll show you. Uh, the, I mean, the community is doing. And of course, the general community of the government. Um, same, same job, there is a big system. They go, one named Billy John, let's go, Billy John here, not here, let's go, the second name, Molly, whatever. Um, so. Yeah, they go like this in the, uh, in the list. Uh, and all the people have three minutes because they talk and they say their thoughts. So, I hope I see, I saw a Muslim student here because they are protesting against the address. But I want to see, um, Muslims more because every day, I hear, is there an Arab here or are there Muslims here? You're two. I don't know, I mean, I go to two. So. We have to warn ourselves, and we talk, and we say, I want more of my son. I want more if I'm a teacher or support staff in the university, um, in Nashville, of course. So. Yeah, in God's name, and in God's name, I'll see you more and more in the communities here in Nashville. Uh, because we are protesting against ourselves. Um, and if, I mean, if you see the live, um. Please, uh, go from the first and see, um, the meeting from the first, uh, and how it works. So. Good night, everybody. I hope everything is good and you all have a good night. Bye.